Good afternoon, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 26, 3 o'clock PM. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Joel Gerard and our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Creighton Cochran. Please stand.
Everybody go and bow your heads with me so we can pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come together and continue to make decisions for this city. Lord, allow us to be like Esther and realize that we were made for a time such as this. Lord, allow us to be like Peter. Let us step out of the boat onto the water when you call our names. And Lord, allow us to be like David, men and women after your own heart. Lord, I understand that there are people in this city that are hurting and they need healing. There are people that have not been loved by you directly, and I ask that you go into each and every home in Bossier City and be there for every person that is in our city. Lord, we love you, we thank you, we continue to honor you in everything we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saying of my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did again.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Chris Smith.
Here.
Mr. Cochran.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Cliff Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. In accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. If a board member has a conflict of interest on any of the items included on this agenda, please disclose that conflict now.
All right, ceremonial matters, recognition of guests. I believe we have one.
Yes, sir.
LeVar Greenhouse with the Regional Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T Louisiana.
LeVar could not make it today.
Sure.
I'm Wayne Stein, Associate Director of Engineering, and I brought some folks with us here just in case we have any questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to come speak. AT&amp;T's invested a lot of money in the community, and we're continuing to grow and grow with our fiber product. So, I have information available if y'all would like to see of what we've built already and what our plans are for the remaining of 2025 and what we are proposing for 2026. That's, you know, about all I had, really, just open the floor for questions if y'all had any.
Does any council member have any questions?
I do, Mr. President. When do you think y'all will be done with everybody's backyards and everything like that that y'all are doing?
By the end of 2026, our plan covers probably over 95% of the residents.
Okay.
Yeah, so be real close by the end of the year, by the end of 2026.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know where, right now, currently, you're, you have work going on? Which neighborhoods?
I personally do not, but I have local engineers here that could maybe answer that. Ralph, any indications?
I mean, I can look at the map. Green Acres Place currently, I saw them working there, that's part of the 2025 bill.
Could you come up to the mic, sir?
Ralph, can you step up here, please?
Sure.
Under the 2025 bill currently, right now, they're working at, at Green Acres Place. Let me get to that. 2025. There's a location, so that, that area up there, Green Acres Place, there's a location down here off of Shed Road, just east of Benton Road where they're overbuilding. East Texas, on the north side of East Texas, between Swan Lake and Old Shed Road, kinda, I guess the southern part of that would be going all the way to I-20. That's, that's the north side. On the south side, for 2025, Panther Drive, the subdivision on the rear, on the backside of the old Parkway High School, and then River Bend Drive, a little bit further south there, it's Sligo on the west side, just there north of the new, the new Parkway High School. So that's where we're planning on doing a building this year.
We've probably already covered 50% of Bossier City already with our fiber product.
That was one of my questions that was coming next. And fiber is the, the future proof, kinda, is that where we think, is there something else that's already being heard of in your world?
It's the latest and the greatest.
Okay.
Yeah. Who knows what the future will bring?
Yes.
But the capacity of fiber, we still don't know the capacity yet.
Okay, haven't even made it there.
No.
And the 50% remaining, I mean, is that like a five-year plan, 10-year plan, or is it, he talked, or you talked about 50% of the city's covered, correct?
Already.
So the other 50, is it something that's gonna be more when someone calls you and needs services, or what is the thought there?
No, we have a program to finish overbuilding our copper network with our fiber product.
Excellent.
And we think we'll be in the 90% range complete by the end of 26.
Thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Speaking of copper.
Mr. Cochran.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment or question, slash question I would have for you since you're here is in my neighborhood, I believe you're done there, however, when we do get a heavy rain or we get a little bit of floodwater, a lot of the housing, I guess where your installations are, are starting to float up. Do we already have a mechanism in place where we're taking care of the stuff that we're already done with?
We do. We have people here that's from our Installation and Maintenance Group as well, and they handle complaints as soon as they're called in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Mr. Smith?
I live down in Shady Grove, and if you drive down Shady Grove Boulevard, I'm assuming it's y'all's stuff. It's in the median, the pedestals look like, the cover's missing, they're bent, they're, they're ugly. Is there any way to address that? Get them out?
Copper network. And, and again, we have someone with maintenance here with us, and, and, and we can address that and get back with you on that.
I had someone send me a video yesterday if you'd like to see it, I mean.
If you can give me a specific area, a location, then yeah.
From Barstow Boulevard to the back of Shady Grove.
Are you familiar with that?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Very familiar with that. Is there any other council?
Yeah, I do, Mr. What, what, one of the biggest complaints that we get is, they came in my backyard, they cut my lock off my gate, they let my dog out, they left trash all in my backyard. And it didn't just start with y'all, it started with Optimum, then we got Xfinity, now we've got y'all, we, we've been going, you know, we've been going through it for a couple of years now. And that, that's the biggest thing, and another big problem is there's no one here that speaks English. I can't communicate with anybody. There's nobody around. That, that's the biggest complaints that, that we have gotten. If we can kind of do a little bit better on that, you know, if, I mean, I'm not, not a lawyer or policeman, but I think it'd be highly illegal for somebody to cut a lock off a gate and, and go in their backyard if I'm not mistaken, even if it is to get to a utility usement in the backyard.
I, I, I can't imagine any, any of our employees or contractors doing that.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's happened, you know, they showed the video from their, their cameras on their house, them walking up with bolt cutters and cut the lock off and going in, let their dog out, and going back there and digging in the backyard, then they leave. So if we could just, you know, be a little bit better on that end, that would be fantastic.
Our crews stick door hangers out to let everybody know we're coming ahead of time.
Yeah.
So we do knock on doors to get access if we're in the rear server tube, but what you're describing, that should not happen.
Yeah.
Lisa's in charge of our construction department?
Yeah, that shouldn't, never absolutely happen, anybody cutting any lock off. When they put these hangers out, they have a number to the contractors on here if there are any kind of complications that they can call, and we absolutely want to take care of that. We, we should never see anything like that. So if they are having problems, if we can get, get them to hang on to these, 'cause, 'cause they do mean something. I know a lot of people don't see them because they may be hung on their front door and they don't use it, or, you know, something like that. So these do matter, and I leave some here for you, 'cause this is a local number.
Okay.
You know, this is for the local contractors.
Right.
And so you can contact them, and you can get my name, number, whatever, call me if there's more issues than that.
Okay.
And we do want to address that, those situations like that.
Not, not saying it was y'all, you know, it could have been, you know, it could have been one of the other two companies.
Sure.
That's just some of the stuff that, that we've been dealing with for the past couple of years since this, since this all started, so.
Councilman Smith?
Your contractors, are, are their trucks, do they have the AT&amp;T logo on them, or are they uniformed in some, because a lot of times you'll say, I don't know who it was, you just had on a T-shirt.
They, they should have, actually, our main contractor is Devaney Construction, and even if they are a subcontractor of Devaney, we, we can make sure they have a sign on their truck that says, you know, utility work for Devaney Construction or whatever. They do have those.
All our vehicles should be labeled.
Yes.
If you see a contractor out there working with no labels on their vehicle, they're not working for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I hope you don't feel beat up. We invited you so we could beat you up.
We're great.
And Mr. Smith, I'll get back with you about the Shady Grove.
Okay. I'll give you my number.
Okay.
Do y'all have business, y'all have business cards, or, would y'all mind leaving them with, with Phyllis over there, just so we could, if we do need you, we could give you a holler?
And Ms. Ross has something?
When you guys get done putting your fibers down, is it normal that you go door to door and asking peoples to change from one company to the next company because you all put your fiber down?
There, there may be salespeople that, that come out. There's also a code they can scan on this to see when it's available in their area if they just want to go in there and change, you know, so.
Salespeople are knocking on the doors, saying that the fibers are being put down. Is that the norm, that after you guys put the fiber in a neighborhood, you go door to door to try to encourage the neighbors to purchase AT&amp;T?
Well, we don't have, I think, any salespeople here.
We have third parties. There's third parties that are contracted that go door to door, yes.
Okay, okay. Because I just know that in some of the neighborhoods, they do complain of the AT&amp;T knocking on doors and trying to get them to change from one company to the next, that you can do cheaper and your Wi-Fi's.
We do want them to know our product's available.
Okay, well, that's understandable.
Bottom line, everybody's in to make money.
Right, 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 okay.
He does it, you know, but yeah, we have, we do have people that go door to door.
Okay, so it's probably a third party that's knocking on the door? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
I was gonna tell you, y'all are doing a great job. I live in Green Acres Place, and we had a couple of issues, they took care of them like that.
Appreciate the comment.
Everybody's happy.
Thank y'all for the invitation.
It's a pleasure speaking with y'all. Yep, absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll put our business cards over here.
Right, thank you.
All right, council, there's no more guests to recognize, we'll move into approve the agenda, but I do believe we have an add-on.
No, sorry, they pulled it.
They pulled the add-on?
Okay.
So I'll just need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gerard, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries, and I'm not sure what's going on with our screen.
Screen's a little wonky over there, isn't it? All right, council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12, 2025 regular meeting and the August 8, 2025 special meeting and dispense with the readings. So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Deborah Ross, a second by Councilman Vince Maggio. Is there any public comment?
About this or something else?
We're taking public comment on the minutes from August 12 and August 8. Okay. If there's no other comment, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, public hearings and actions on unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance allocating $200,000 for construction of a new sanitary sewer lift station along Viva Drive and Shed Road to provide sewer service to customers within this area using the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund to cover all project costs. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I, I think from the general feeling of the public, I doubt that this is gonna pass, but I would like to kind of use this as a way to compliment the board for what y'all are doing. I think because of one of your first actions that you did in Bossier City was you passed an ordinance to go back and review the past five years of spending, that you're looking at goals and objectives for the city. I think passing this tax is kind of like putting the cart before the horse, because you don't really have a strategic plan and you're trying to get into that. So I kind of applaud the council for where you're going, that this may be something that you might need to consider in the future, but I don't see it right now, but I don't think the public really supports new taxes, but thank you for giving me the chance to comment.
Mr. Crockett, this is just an annual ad valorem tax that we pass every year. This is no, this isn't a roll forward.
Oh, I thought that was the roll forward.
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, but just want to make sure the record is clear that this is a vote that we take every year to send to the tax assessor's office, and we are assessing the exact same mileage that we assessed last year, so no roll forward.
Thank you. Can I make one more quick comment? I appreciate that. I think sometimes the fact sheets are not very self-explanatory. I was gonna make that comment at another time, but I prefer to just make that in one comment. The fact sheets need to be taken seriously by the mayor's office and anybody else who drafts one so that it has enough detail. There are several others later on the meeting. I'm not gonna comment on it now, but there are other things, because you as councilmen need to, to know what you're voting on, but we, the people, need to be able to look at one document or whatever the attachments are so we understand what you're voting on, and I think, but I appreciate your comment. Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chris.
And Ms. Williamson, just for clarity, what's that mileage rate? I know I asked you last meeting, but just make sure it's on the record for today.
The total is 21.50. And I have the last years if y'all need to look at it to verify.
Nope, I trust you. All right, 21.50. All right, is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2025 Arena Operations Special Revenue Fund budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Gerard, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopting ordinance to approve reported change order one for the 2024 Citywide Street Improvements Project with an increase of $8,500 for a total contract price of $146,125. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopting ordinance levying ad valorem taxes on all properties subject to taxation by the City of Bossier City, Louisiana for the year 2025, and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I, I think from the general feeling of the public, I doubt that this is gonna pass, but I would like to kind of use this as a way to compliment the board for what y'all are doing. I think because of one of your first actions that you did in Bossier City was you passed an ordinance to go back and review the past five years of spending, that you're looking at goals and objectives for the city. I think passing this tax is kind of like putting the cart before the horse, because you don't really have a strategic plan and you're trying to get into that. So I kind of applaud the council for where you're going, that this may be something that you might need to consider in the future, but I don't see it right now, but I don't think the public really supports new taxes, but thank you for giving me the chance to comment.
Mr. Crockett, this is just an annual ad valorem tax that we pass every year. This is no, this isn't a roll forward.
Oh, I thought that was the roll forward.
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, but just want to make sure the record is clear that this is a vote that we take every year to send to the tax assessor's office, and we are assessing the exact same mileage that we assessed last year, so no roll forward.
Thank you. Can I make one more quick comment? I appreciate that. I think sometimes the fact sheets are not very self-explanatory. I was gonna make that comment at another time, but I prefer to just make that in one comment. The fact sheets need to be taken seriously by the mayor's office and anybody else who drafts one so that it has enough detail. There are several others later on the meeting. I'm not gonna comment on it now, but there are other things, because you as councilmen need to, to know what you're voting on, but we, the people, need to be able to look at one document or whatever the attachments are so we understand what you're voting on, and I think, but I appreciate your comment. Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chris.
And Ms. Williamson, just for clarity, what's that mileage rate? I know I asked you last meeting, but just make sure it's on the record for today.
And I have the last years if y'all need to look at it to verify.
Nope, I trust you. All right, 21.50. All right, is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council?
I don't know how to turn my watch out.
You good? All right. Council, please cast your vote. Very rare moment that he leaves time on the clock.
This thing is going crazy today. Motion carries unanimously. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2025 Arena Operations Special Revenue Fund budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Gerard, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopting ordinance to approve reported change order one for the 2024 Citywide Street Improvements Project with an increase of $8,500 for a total contract price of $146,125. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance allocating $3 million to fund Phase One of the Water Meter Replacement Project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute a purchase agreement in conjunction with Ordinance 94 of 2023. Final reading.
So move.
Second. We got a motion by Councilwoman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment?
Tamara Crane, 706 Bearcat, 7111. I want you to know our seniors are asking of me and how I've been answering them, just because that way we can all be on the same page, and if maybe I have, need some clarification. First thing, some of our seniors have contacted me to say that when they talked to some city council, they were told that city council is not aware of this new building purchase that was voted on on August 12 that was approved. So I just want to let y'all know, some of y'all do call, some of y'all come by, but please, if there's ever any question about what Bossier Council on Aging is doing, what we want to do, call us, come by. You can even follow us on social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, and even LinkedIn. We are putting information out there all the time. But I do want to let you know that Mayor Chandler and Amanda, they definitely should be able to answer specific questions about the building itself, because I want you to be able to give your constituents the best, right answer whenever we're communicating and I'm saying, call your city council, they can help you. I really don't want them to feel like y'all don't have that. The next thing clients have been asking me is, well, how big is this new building? How much space are we gonna get? Amanda has explained to me that the design and space allocation cannot be finalized until the purchase of this building is done. However, Mayor Chandler did state that we would be getting about 9,000 square feet of the 34,290 there. That is about half of what we have, so while we can trim down and consolidate offices and such, the reality is that such a reduction in that much square footage would require us to reduce or eliminate some services rather than actually grow to meet the growing demand of our senior population, you know, baby boomers in Bossier Parish. Seniors have also asked me, well, what kind of updates will this new building have? So here are some things that they have expressed that they're hoping for. A covered loading and unloading area, because many of our seniors do come in on the bus, or even cars that can safely drop seniors off. A caregiver family-style restroom so that maybe a husband can help take his wife to the bathroom and not have to go into the women's or the men's, or even just stay home. And then the real pie in the sky is a market-style food pantry partnership so that seniors can come and actually shop for food with dignity instead of digging through food boxes to get their food. I'm sure some others may have different comments today, but please know our seniors are so excited. They're also just anxious. This has been many years of talking about a building. They are looking to us, myself, our board, and to all of y'all for the clarity and honesty and a commitment that this new space will truly serve them for years to come. As Ordinance 94 of 23 specified, it's to either construct a senior center or to purchase and renovate an existing structure. So I'm here just to help make sure their questions are heard and that we continue working together, because, believe me, we want this to be more than just walls and rooms. Our senior center thrives with life every day, and we want to continue that with the new structure.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. I will say that the building, as far as questions about the building, we don't own the building, so we're very limited on our knowledge. We're going off the blueprints that have been provided to us, so when we purchased the building, at that time, we could get in with an architect and our engineering firm and really figure out the configuration and the layout of the building. The 9,000 square feet is, I think, a ballpark estimate of what we're proposing, but I did pull, because this is a very passionate project of a lot of seniors, I've received dozens of emails over the last two weeks and phone calls. So I pulled from our 2023 plan that we, that we did when we were gonna construct a brand-new facility, and I went through the square footage requirements that we were looking at at that. And, you know, you come in here and, you know, the Council on Aging doesn't, isn't necessarily gonna need its own dedicated lobby and reception area, because it has one main lobby when you come in. The IT closet and the mechanical rooms, those are square footage that the city is taking responsibility of, so it's square footage that the Council on Aging won't need. There's gonna be shared space as far as some of the restrooms, the kitchen area, those are gonna also be proposed as shared space. So when you, when you get down to the brass tacks of what we worked on back in 2023, Ms. Crane and Mr. McSwain, and I believe Mr. Russianbach was involved then, comes up to only about 9,300 square feet of actual Council on Aging space, then you have a few of the other things that it's gonna, we're considering shared space. So I, I really think that we're increasing, if you, if you look at the, at the space that's dedicated 100%, it's for nobody else but the Council on Aging. Then you look at some of the shared spaces that we originally thought we were going to have to build, but we don't, aren't necessarily needs anymore. But Council on Aging will have access to use those spaces as needed. We're really going to have more space than what you currently have because we, we pulled the, we were trying to figure out and we pulled the blueprints from the current building, and it's been added on over the years. So true square footage, I think, is a little unknown, but we're estimating somewhere between 12 and 13, 14,000 square feet. So you're going to be right at that number, if not more. And again, all of this is just pie in the sky until we purchase the building and we can go in there and actually figure out the proper layout. So I just want that to be known, that we have no intention of cutting any space out for any, for Council on Aging. We don't want to see you reduce your services. And I feel pretty strongly that once we go in the building after we own it, and Ms. McGraw, 17 days after this, as I believe around September 12th or 13th, is when the mayor could actually sign the purchase agreement.
Yes, sir.
And then closing would happen, I would assume, a few weeks after that because the title company will have to do its, its due diligence. So we're probably looking, Ms. Nottingham, beginning of October-ish timeframe. So that'll, it'll be at that time before we could even know what the space is going to look like, but I think it's not the council's perspective or the administration's perspective to cut your, your space. I think what we've, what we're looking at, I think, is going to be more than what you currently have. So I hope that addresses some of your concerns.
I certainly think it's going to help clarify for seniors because, again, I truly come up here, y'all, and I'm, I mean, they come at me, they come in my office every day. They also call and email me because as soon as this was done last or two weeks ago, it was yay, it's happening, and I'm excited for them, and they want answers. And sometimes I just have to go, I only know what I'm told, and I'm telling y'all everything I know, but it's just not always the best for them. So, but thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. And Ms. Nottingham, I don't know if there's anything you want to add or if I covered it. All right, sounds good. Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, I've just got one, one question for Ms. Crane. Are y'all still receiving annual funding from the parish?
Yes, sir.
Two?
Uh-huh, $115,000.
$115,000 from the parish?
That's the same amount we have been receiving since 2015 from them.
Okay. All right. That's, that's what I, thank you.
I'll speak when she's done.
Yes, ma'am.
Deborah Crook, 316 Oakland Place, Bojor. I've understood so a lot of this we have, and I thank y'all for giving us this opportunity. One of my concerns is, in this previous ordinance that we had that we're talking about, $4 million was given to us, allocated for the purchase or renovation of a new building. Based on this proposal of the possible 9,000 square feet, that's about 25% of the building, which would equal about $1 million for the purchase of our area. So that would leave us $3 million for renovation. Where's the extra money actually coming from for that purchase of the building? Because that $4 million is supposed to be used for the Council on Aging only, not for other city departments and agencies to come into the building.
I, I don't have anything that we can discuss on that matter. That'll be a conversation we have at a later date, but that's not something we can discuss here. But certainly, I think we don't need to lose sight that that money is the taxpayer of Bojor City's money. It's not any one individual's money. It belongs to the taxpayers of Bojor City and to move the taxpayers of Bojor City forward and the city forward. So I, I don't want us to forget and lose sight of, of that it's tax dollars that we're talking about.
Well, your senior citizens are, you know, a good portion of that. Like I said, that was allocated in that direction, and that's one of our concerns is that that money is generally used for benefits where we don't have to cut services and all that kind of stuff there.
Yes, ma'am. They, yeah, I, I agree. They, the senior citizens are a vital part, which is why we're, we, we made this a priority to, to get a new building because I said it, you know, three years ago when we, or two years ago when we first started this project, like the, the current building, it's kind of a disgrace, but this new, this new facility is, is state-of-the-art and it's something to be proud of. And so I think that the seniors are going to be very happy with the accommodations.
Well, and I do appreciate those that have come by and toured the buildings. I've had discussions with some of y'all, and I appreciate everything that y'all have done on that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Ms. Ross, you said you had something?
Yes. Do anyone know what the price of the building that we're purchasing on Benton Road? Do?
I don't think that we've come up with an agreed-upon price yet because the mayor hasn't had the authority to sign a purchase agreement yet. And I know there's talks about it, but I don't think a finalized price has been agreed upon yet.
Thank you.
Is that?
Within the allocated.
It's within the allocated budget.
Okay.
All right, is there any other, any other comments from the council? Nope, all right.
You have to say your name and address. Ketter, 731 Jemaine Drive, Bojor City. I just wanted to thank y'all again. I was on the board three years ago when we started this, and I truly thought I was going to die before it was done. I just had a kidney transplant. I'm 73 years old, and I just want you to know how much this council means to me, the employees, and the clients that come to us. They are so gracious. Now, they're going to give you a hard time. They're old like me. But anyway, I just want to commend the staff that's here and all of the volunteers that you're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Is there any other comments? All right, if there's none, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance to authorize the installation of a four-way stop sign at the intersections of Preserve Boulevard and Column Drive, the intersection of Fuller Love Drive and Wilder Street, and the intersection of Anita Street and Gay Boulevard. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bojor City and the Bojor Council on Aging to set forth terms and conditions under which the city and the BCOA will cooperate to facilitate the BCOA's use of the premises for the delivery of senior citizens' programs and services. Final reading.
So move.
Second. And a motion by Councilman Hammond and a second by Councilman Maggie. Is there any public comment?
Tamara Crane, 706 Bearcat. So in looking at this cooperative endeavor agreement, it was presented two weeks ago, and then I've been able to give it back to our board and have them look at it. And some of the, or the only concern really, is the way the agreement reads, whereas the BCOA has agreed to use its own funds for furniture fixtures and any improvements necessary to operate from these premises. This, in a legal term, any improvements can be interpreted to include improvements, like I just mentioned, that our seniors want. Adding a covered overhang, including a caregiver bathroom, that would seriously overcommit our funding ability. That would make us have to reduce services because if I've got to go build an overhang, I may not be able to deliver as many home-delivered meals. If I've got to go put a caregiver bathroom in, I may have to reduce or eliminate something else. So our board is looking and would ask if we could have that changed to minor improvements. That way, it kind of ensures we are not asking for a dollar amount, but there is a presumption at this point in time legally that could include not just painting the walls, but putting in an over, a drop-off area that could mean hundreds of thousands. I'm not in construction, but you get where I'm going with this. We do have approximately $1 million for furniture and fixtures because, in all honesty, some of our furniture wouldn't handle moving around an office space, much less a building without falling, without falling apart. So just want to ask that y'all look at that in this cooperative endeavor agreement because I don't know that my board would allow me to sign where it says any improvements and that would, because that could financially commit us to more than we have funding for.
Ms. Crane, Mr. Jacobs, thoughts are?
Well, when, when you're talking about improvements and you're starting to differentiate between certain types of improvement, I, you know, minor improvements are sort of in the eye of the beholder. Improvements are in, you know, cover additions, you know, subtractions, you know, changes, you know, are you talking about structure, decorative, things of that nature? So I would respectfully recommend that we not, you know, if there's going to be some discussion about what's to be included in the term improvement or not, you know, what's considered an improvement, we can list out, you know, at the council's, you know, discretion, certain things that would be included, would be included or define the term improvements. But simply to say minor improvements leaves it open to interpretation. So I don't think that would be specific enough.
I guess my understanding of this was the improvements that they would specifically need for just their, their constituents they serve.
Right now, it would, in fact, cover that. Improvements are improvements.
Right.
Yes.
But if we start, you know, trying to define or characterize what improvement is, you know, covered in this, if you start to limit that, then you're going to run into problems.
Gotcha.
And we are having discussions following up with council because this is bond money and there are restrictions on how it can be used. So we are getting clarification on that since it is not a, an organization of the cities or a department of the cities, then there are limitations on how that money can be spent.
Okay, very good. So, oh, I'm good. Mr. Jacobs, if, if the BCOA were to come to us and say, hey, you know, we don't, we don't feel like this is an improvement that we should make, couldn't we, we could always come back and amend this at a later date or, or have an attachment to this, correct?
We could. And to follow up on what Ms. Nottingham said, we do have a call scheduled with bond council this week.
Okay.
To talk about what would be allowed to be expended and what would not from bond money.
All right, sounds good. Ms. Crane, does that address your concerns there?
So you can look to people behind me and try to gauge, is it addressing their concerns? But it does go back to what Ms. Koch brought up is, again, there was $4 million in allocation. Understand, trying to get approval and stuff, but making sure and that, again, because at this point, it could very well be that we're, that we get this building and yay, we're the claim is the Council on Aging is getting a new building, and then it goes in and then it goes, but the Council on Aging doesn't have access for y'all to get in. The Council on Aging doesn't have this over here, and yet people come to me and go, but there was $4 million. Why don't we have access? Why do we not have this? Well, and then it said, well, they were supposed to do all that. Their contract says they were supposed to make the improvements. We just bought a building. They have to do it. And I just want to be clear, we have about a million. We can, but with the allocation that was made with 94, 23 ordinance, $4 million was to purchase, build, or build or purchase and renovate. So just wanting to make sure that that $4 million, that we're going to have the money. I'm not trying to spend more, but we have just a few little needs and stuff. So with that memorandum or with this cooperative endeavor, we just don't want to over-financially commit ourselves. We're not in debt. We don't want to go in debt.
I understand.
I have some questions whenever you get.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Hammond.
If you don't mind coming back up, you said that you have $1 million in the bank?
Yes, sir, in our savings.
Okay. How, how much money did y'all receive from the state this year in funding?
We get approximately $600,000 from GOEA. That is federal and state money combined.
Okay. Then you get $150,000 from us, and you get $115,000 from the parish.
Yes, sir.
Any place else that y'all receive funding?
Yeah, we get grants, donations, and our clients make contributions.
Have y'all received any grant money this year?
Roughly about $20,000, $15,000 to $20,000. DOTD is one, and we do a vision grant as well.
Okay. And all that money that you're talking about is included in that $1 million?
Oh, no, sir. That is our operating money. Our $1 million is, we have a savings. We have a savings account that has just over $1 million.
So your, your bills are actually going to go down by moving in that building across the street because the city is going to be paying most of the, most of the bills over there.
That is my understanding. Right now, we do pay rent to the city, and we pay for things like internet, security, we telephone. We don't pay lights or water. The city does.
You definitely won't need any security over there.
That's good.
You can rest assured about that.
So yes, and also I was told that our landscaping, we currently pay about $12,000 in landscaping maintenance fees. We won't need that. So basically, what we have looked at, Mr. Hammond, in the past two weeks of kind of what we're being told will kind of be covered and stuff, is we're going to have a cost savings of probably about $30,000 of not services, depending on where things go with phone and internet, that kind of stuff.
$30,000 a month?
No, a year for the year. Between $25,000 and $30,000.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Why don't, why don't we do this? I really want to wrap all this up, but since we're going to be talking with bond council this week, why don't we postpone the second reading of this to the next meeting, September 10th? That way, that way, there's clear understanding what the city can spend the money on and what it can't. That way, you are fully prepared on what you will have to spend money on if you want it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Rest assured, a covered awning is not going to cost you $200,000.
That's good. Yeah, good deal.
If it does, I'm going to go in the awning business.
Oh, yeah.
So rest assured that it will not.
All right, so that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the whole council's seconded that. All right, just pick one. Councilman Cliff Smith will second it. So the motion on the table, it's just to delay this until, continue this until September 10th, right? All right. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
I just want to make sure delaying it doesn't mess up the purchase, correct? Because that was a separate.
No, no, that's two separate ordinances.
Want to make sure they weren't contingent. Thank you.
There's nothing else, council, please cast your vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, new business.
Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of low-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a convenience store with fuel sales located at 5500 Shed Road, Bojor City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President. Ms. Brown? I, I drove by looking for this business, and it doesn't seem to be there.
No, it doesn't exist yet. They're clearing right now and starting construction.
Okay. I think I asked this question a while back. Why are we approving these licenses so early?
The applicant wants to apply early because they don't want to purchase the property or start construction without it. It's a part of their.
But you said they're clearing it?
They're clearing it now. So we approved this actually in 2024 in April, I believe, and it expired. And so now they're reapplying. Because if a church or a school comes in and they haven't started construction, they will lose it and therefore they can't use it for the, the intent.
So they didn't buy the property back in '24?
Well, it was under contract.
Okay.
They just closed on it just recently. We had some water main relocation issues, and they wanted to work all through that to make sure that they could finance it and purchase it.
Okay.
It's, it's very common with the convenience stores because low-content alcohol is a large portion of their sales.
Well, I mean, I'm just worried about, I mean, we come in here and approve, we come in and approve these for one person, and then by the time that the building is done, you know, that they've sold it to somebody else and, or they're financing it for somebody else and somebody else is in there running it and stuff like that is, you know, just kind of the worry that, that I get. We, we've had problems with convenience stores doing that and, and stuff like that. Not saying that this one will do that, but, but I, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? If there's not, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of high- and low-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a liquor store located at 5520 Shed Road, Bojor City, Louisiana. First and final reading. liquor store located at 5520 Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
Yeah, I'm looking at something real quick before I vote. I'm sorry, guys. I should have looked at this before we. There's two different addresses here. So is this a liquor store going in next to it?
All the same owner, the convenience store will be to the west side and then there will be another strip center that's perpendicular to Shed Road that will have a liquor store and a coffee shop in it.
A liquor store, coffee shop?
Liquor store and a coffee shop. They will be separated by a wall.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you can, you can verify the hours. It won't be 24 hours, correct?
No, there was a condition placed at our level that will carry on with this ordinance, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekdays and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weekends was the condition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are y'all waiting on me to vote?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries with one against Mr. Hammond. Introducing ordinance, amending ordinance number 76 of 2025 by correcting certain typographical errors in the body of the ordinance to reflect the new correct address of 1855 Innovation Drive, Suite 100. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gerard, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introducing ordinance appropriating $350,000 from the Streets and Drainage Fund to provide the required local match for facility planning and control project number 50-M29-24-01 for Benton Road repairs, planning, and construction. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Bossier Parish Corner and the Bossier Parish Sheriff pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 40:1216.1 to establish a SANE program in Bossier Parish. First reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion by, I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, does Chief Howgan, do you mind coming up and just explaining what this is?
Absolutely. So we are trying to enter into agreement. We got the Parish Corner and the Deputy Corner here with us as well. Same program has been going on for years and years in the state of Louisiana. The way that it is set up is that we fall into a certain district. That district goes all the way down to Alexandria, goes all the way over to east Louisiana as well. The problem that we have is when we have a local sexual assault victim, we may be calling a SANE nurse that's coming from Alexandria. So we've put this victim in a hospital for two, three, four hours waiting on that person to come up. Excuse me. By doing this, we'll be able to get into an agreement with the corner's office who has the, the privilege of having two SANE nurses on their staff currently. What we are going to be doing is to go into an agreement with them and cover their overtime and then we have our own SANE nurse program. We would have two inside the Parish of Bossier between us and the Sheriff's Department basically to use at our disposal. So you can come on up here.
We got Doc Williams, our Parish Corner here with us too. So I will say on the money side of it, we did not do it to ask for any more. We had, whenever we prepared our 2025 budget at the time, we had outside chaplain program in place. Whenever we moved into 2025, we, we did not renew that program with the one that we had and we came in-house. So the money that was allocated to that, we're just going to push over into this. The way that it was listed was basically just for outside council and we'll just push it over into this program. So it was already available. That's the reason we didn't come for any more money.
Doc Williams, any, any questions for me? I had a chance to talk with Mr. Maggio about it beforehand, but it basically, as Chief Howgan said, it prevents us from having to share our nurse examiner that does the rape exam with nine other parishes. Bossier Parish is the most important to us and, and so we'll have people dedicated just to Bossier Parish and Bossier City. So the response times go down for them to get to the hospital to perform the exam. His law enforcement officers or the sheriff's law enforcement officer that's having to be with the victim there at the hospital less time is better for everyone. So.
Mr. President, I just want to thank you guys. I mean, I know y'all have been working on this. It's a very big deal for our people. So thank you.
Yeah, I reiterate what Councilman Gerard said. I think it's fantastic. And if, Chief, if you do see down the road you need more money for this, I mean, you're dealing with the most volatile out there at a time that is horrific for them. That if you do see that you need, please don't hesitate to ask.
It's very passionate to us. I know it is to them. It's been a blessing to work with them. And it's, like you just said, I mean, you're taking somebody that's just experienced the most horrific thing that they ever have in their lifetime and you're sticking them somewhere for hours on end, you know, and this would negate the majority of that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Thank you, Doc.
There's no other questions. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introducing ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the City of Bossier City as surplus to the city's needs and provide for disposal according to law. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Introducing ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the City of Bossier City by annexing approximately one acre adjacent to the current city limits east of Swan Lake Road and south of Innovation Drive, B1 Bank. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Counsel, this will not come back on the next meeting. It'll be the following meeting because it takes a longer advertising period. Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a dispatcher control clerk due to vacancy from retirement. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman, I'm sorry, motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Hammond. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a maintenance mechanic two due to a retirement and backfilling any vacant position this may create in the building maintenance department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker two for the water treatment plant in Public Utilities. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of an accounts clerk two due to a separation and backfilling any vacant positions this may create in the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Parkway High School homecoming parade, September 25th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Approve reappointment of Creighton Cochran to the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission Board. Upon council approval, for this appointment will be effective July 1st, 2025 and expires on August 31st, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio, Maggio, excuse me. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Did we receive any qualifications on this person?
I hear he comes.
I mean, it took a while to get a motion in a second, so I'm just kind of wondering. Started sweating down there a little bit.
Waiting to see if somebody else would volunteer.
I'm sweating. Anyway, Mr. Smith, Chris Smith has it very warm in here.
It is hot in here.
It is hot.
Ms. Askew Brown would agree with me. It was freezing when we came in. Thank you.
No.
All right. If there's no other comment, Mr. Cochran, thank you for your service on the Sports Commission. Council, please cast your vote.
You don't have to kick my foot that hard next time.
Mr. Gerard, did yours not pop up?
Sorry. I was joking.
Off your phone.
Motion carries unanimously. Approve reappointment of Donald J. Willhite to the Cypress Black Bayou Recreation and Water Conservation District Board of Commissioners. Appointment effective August 1st, 2025 and expires on July 31st, 2030.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment?
David Crockett, 653 Dubain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Members of the council, I ask you to carefully reconsider this appointment to the Cypress District Board, the timing and the process that you, you use when you nominate people to boards. This is definitely an improvement because it's going through the council. I don't know Mr. Will, Willhite. I'm sure he's a fine person, but I'm not certain about whether he served continuously. I understand that one of the members of the Cypress Board stepped down and then was reappointed. Correct me if I'm wrong. But the Cypress Board is a taxing authority that raises roughly $1.5 million annually and through its millage, over 70% of Bossier Parish pays into the Cypress Board. Those are, that's including homeowners and businesses in Bossier City. So with that level of responsibility, the process for appointing board members should be transparent and deliberate. Definitely, the Bossier Charter does not address this issue, but it has caused controversy in the past. This is, but this board itself has not been without controversy. Many of you recall that Robert Berry dual office holding case went all the way through the appeals process to the Louisiana Supreme Court at a cost to all of your citizens who paid taxes to the Cypress District. That issue could have been resolved by the police jury in the Cypress Board, but instead taxpayers bore the cost. So I think these appointments are very important and I think that, that this council ought to consider whether that these appointed positions by the mayor and the council should be advertised publicly for a minimum period of time to ensure openness and fairness. Do your, do you even know if your precincts in your district pay to the Cypress Board? Did anything come out? Nothing was advertised to the public? This did not go out as far as I know in the public paper that this position was coming forward. But I think people in Bossier Parish and Bossier City would like to volunteer for these positions. And I'm not saying that the current nominee is not the right person. Should this council pass, the basic question is, should this council pass an ordinance to define a clear appointment process for this and other positions? Understand that other positions like the Port Authority are coming forward, a larger taxing authority with greater responsibility. I hope this council takes the time to consider how you're going to approve nominations in the future, but I recommend that you defer this appointment just to consider and give the public an opportunity to nominate themselves. And I understand that this is a reappointment, so you may consider that differently. I don't think it should. I think every appointment should be based on history, based on who's available and who would serve the public to the best of their ability. So thank you for the chance to comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jacobs.
If this is not done today, then the city will lose the ability to have a member of its own choosing on the board and then the board itself would fill this vacant position. It is an appointment, I believe, of somebody who served on the board for approximately two years.
And I believe that would be a temporary appointment and then you would get a chance to appoint it. But if you don't know that for a fact, would you please look that up? Because you're basically forcing them to make a decision right now without all the information. Right now, you're already past the serving period, but I think that's a temporary appointment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crockett. But I was going to bring that up, Mr. Jacobs. I did see at the Cypress Black Bayous meeting a few weeks ago, they voted to extend Mr. Willhite's appointment should the city not so. I reached out to the mayor's office last week to make sure that there were, an appointment would be on this agenda so the city could have a say in it. I think it is important to note that Mr. Willhite is currently the appointee on that board and has had almost a perfect attendance. I think he's missed two or three meetings over three years of serving on the board. But I don't disagree with you. I have, I have advocated that appointments to board should be more transparent. However, the way our current system is set up, it is chosen solely by the mayor. However, he chooses to do that with a confirmation vote by the council. But at this point in time, we don't have the time to do that because we're going to, the city risks losing its ability to have a say in the appointment. So we have to move forward.
Mr., may I speak just before Mr. Ray real quick, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
Just, I mean, if none of y'all know Mr. Willhite, Mr. Willhite is more than capable of making decisions. He, his family has run a multimillion dollar electrical company in the city of Bossier for close to 70 years. But he is, I can, I can promise you that Mr. Willhite would, would not vote for taxes to go up on anything in Bossier City or Bossier Parish that would affect himself also, that he would have every decision that he makes in the best thoughts of the people of Bossier City. I know him personally. I would, if he came up tomorrow, I would, I would make a motion to approve him tomorrow also. I think he is a very good, very good choice. And just to correct Mr. Smith, he has only missed one meeting in three years and that includes special meetings that they have called. He, he jumped right in when, when needed be. So if you don't know him, I would recommend you reaching out to him and talking to him.
Thank you.
Was that, was that my gong?
Yeah, we were cutting you off, Mr. Ray.
And I appreciate it, President Smith, for pointing out the, and Councilman Hammond for pointing out the attendance record because that was included in the materials that were included with the appointment. And I just wanted to point out that section 7.0. And I just wanted to point out that Section 7.02 of the Charter does mandate that the mayor nominate and the council approve such boards and commissions. So this is covered in the Charter already, so just want to make that point.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there any other public comment or comment from the council?
He's not here, is he?
I do not see him.
I just wanted to make sure. I didn't think so.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, concludes all our business. Reports. Ms. Williamson, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you.
She looks so thrilled to be here today. She's always excited to come in front of us.
Glad to see you all. Happy to be here. Good afternoon, counsel. You have before you the financials for the month ended July 31st, 2025. Page one is revenue by fund. Revenue is 18% over budget. The increase in general fund revenue is due to increases in sales tax, franchise tax, and the state supplemental pay compared to July 2024, and a transfer in July 2025 to pay an operating lease. The majority of the increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to a transfer in from the Equipment Replacement Fund of $280,000 to purchase streets and drainage equipment. The majority of the increase in Parkway Capital Fund revenue is due to increases in sales tax compared to July 2024, combined with a $92,000 capital contribution from Bossier Parish Police Jury for rehab of Limple Road from Old Brownlee Road to Airline Drive. The majority of the increase in water fund revenue is due to an increase in water sales to Barksville Air Force Base compared to July 2024. The majority of the decrease in EMS fund revenue is decrease in EMS billing revenue due to write-offs and contractual adjustments. Page two is expenses by fund. Expenses are 7% under budget. The majority of the increase in general fund expenditures is due to increases in payroll compared to July 2024, combined with an annual lease payment in July. The majority of the increase in sewer fund expenses is due to an increase in transfers out for debt service compared to July 2024. The decrease in EMS fund expenses is due to a decrease in bad debt expense compared to July 2024. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up 13.1% compared to July 2024. Page four is the Manning Report. Full-time employees are one less than last month and 29 under budget. Part-time employees are the same as last month and 11 under budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for July 2025 has decreased 17% compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income has increased 1% from prior year and is 1% over budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is down 26%. Are there any questions?
Counsel, is there any questions for Ms. Williamson? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. All right. We have Andy with the Engineering Report.
Yeah, I tested this earlier and it works.
Andy Badgino. Did I say it right this time?
Yes, sir.
I've been practicing all day. I guess you'll just have to go without the slides.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I have a project status update for you for the Engineering Department. Just a general overview. We have over $27 million in ongoing design and construction, three of which are projects in construction valued at $5.4 million. And then eight projects in design valued at $10.7 million. We also have seven private developments in construction with an infrastructure value of $2.9 million. We also are pursuing eight grant projects in design value at $9.6 million. I really, there, there we go. This is a Benton Road, southbound turn lane at China Berry. Contractors Onyx Construction, and we are about 95% complete. I did my final inspection on Friday. We are currently awaiting seeding and grass growth, and that's all we have left on that.
Andy, let me interrupt you. How many days early did he finish that project?
Time elapsed is 36%, so he did pretty well. I was pretty impressed by that. This is Citizens Bank Drive. JB James Construction is contractor. We're at about 97% complete with 90% time elapsed. So on schedule is what I would say that is.
He doesn't like me today.
I guess we're going to have to reformat this PowerPoint.
Something to do with...
So what's the update on the city council technology upgrades?
This was, I'm not sure what happened here. Like I said, I tested it this earlier and it worked.
If you guys want to see pictures, I've got them. Lateral B-1 improvements. Testament LLC is a contractor for that. We are about 5.5% complete with 36% time elapsed. We're running into some issues, constructability, unforeseen issues, but we've got that behind us now, so I'm expecting that to move forward pretty quickly. Like I said, we've got seven different private developments going on at the same time, and they're all in various stages. I can go into more detail about that if you've got some more questions. Projects in design, no major updates from last, my last update. Still ongoing with those. But with grant efforts, added another project to that one. The, it's called the Anita Ditch Detention Improvements. We just got word that one of our grants went through, so we will be starting design on that. That's all I have for updates. I know Ms. Askew Brown has something to add, but do you guys...
Well, there we go. We finally got it.
Finally.
Can you go back and start at the top?
I do, you can go through the pictures. That's fine. So that's China Berry. That was taken last week at the final inspection. Citizens Bank Drive, that's the same picture you've seen for forever. And then lateral B-1. Here are some of the private developments that we're working on. Projects in design, that's what I was saying, that list has not changed since our last meeting, our last update meeting. But with grant efforts, you can see I added that Anita Ditch Detention Improvements at the end. That's all I have.
Do you know the status of DOTD and the panel replacements on Benton Road? How much longer that's going to take?
Off the top of my head, no. I know they are moving in pretty quickly, though. I can get that information for you and shoot you a text or something.
Uh, because, oh, yeah, there he is. Mr. Rich, you had your street sweeper last week, and it looked so good. Then they came in and tore up more panels, and now it looks a mess out there again. So Public Works did a good job of cleaning it up, but then they came, come right behind them and destroy it.
I know they've passed Shed Road now with replacement, so they're almost a Benton Road. They're only going to Old Mendenright.
Right.
So, I mean, they're not far.
Okay.
You're doing a great job. Hey, everything doing fast.
That's all I had. Counsel, do y'all have anything else for Mr. Andy? No?
Oh, good meeting. Time to go.
Thank you, Andy.
Just an addendum to Andy's report there. I know there was lots of discussion about AT&amp;T and utilities and them going into people's backyards. There's a lot of anxiety there, FIDO getting out and cutting locks and things like that. We have had discussions about alternative street sections for developers going forward with new residential subdivisions where the utilities would be up front, which would help cure some of these issues with maintenance. However, the setbacks would have to be increased, and you may have to have a larger right-of-way. So that's some additional discussions that we can have going forward on the engineering side with future residential subdivisions. So I just wanted to make you aware that that is a discussion that we're having with SWEPCO and AT&amp;T and Center Point. We're just trying to figure out if all of it can fit up front and everybody's able to maintain it up front without hitting someone else's utilities. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Well, Carolina, let me ask you with, like, Folio and those others that are going in right now, is that something that y'all are going to implement, even though construction has started? I mean, I know utilities have gone in there yet. Is that something y'all are going to implement?
Not here. It would be an ordinance that we would have to amend to allow it in the city limits.
Are y'all going to try to do that before?
No, because this is the first time I'm actually bringing it up to you. That is something that we can talk about and institute. We have a cut sheet on it, so you can kind of see it. But there wouldn't be any reduction in front yard setbacks like the majority of the subdivisions won't. We'd have to push it back further. That's the only caveat to it. The street sections would have to be wider, setbacks would have to be deeper because with all the utilities up front, if someone has to come in and maintain it, we don't want to disturb the foundation of the home either. So we just got to figure out, you know, where that sweet spot is. But we are addressing it because we're getting the calls, too.
From developers?
From the property owners of people going in their backyards. They're letting their dogs out, just the anxiety of a single property owner being there. And just somebody's just arbitrarily in their backyard, and they don't know why, or maybe they didn't get the notice, and so...
Well, I mean, the problem is, you had Optimum that came in and did theirs. Then you had Xfinity right behind them, right when you get through with that. Now you have AT&amp;T. I mean, it's just, it's just, I mean, you know, it's a nightmare with one right after another. And the biggest problem, too, is them not coming back and burying the lines. They're hanging all over everybody's fences.
Yes.
You know, it just looks, it looks, in Plantations Trace Garden Homes, there's cables, there's cables hanging all over people's fences, mainly from the Preserve behind. And, you know, it's just, something's got to give on it.
It's hodgepodge, and we recognize that, and that is something that we should discuss and entertain with the Engineering Department. But we are getting those calls, and it has been addressed, and we're just trying to figure out if it will actually work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for looking into it. Is there any other questions or comments? Well, Mayor Chandler's not here, but I know today is his daughter's birthday, so if Mayor Chandler's watching, we will...
This, she had something she was trying to, she didn't know how to properly do it during the meeting.
That was the one that got pulled off the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's called planning to get changing his own...
That, 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 that agenda... It was on the agenda. It was pulled yesterday afternoon by the property owner. They pulled it off the agenda. So we sent out a, we sent out a new agenda on the city's website at about, right at 3 o'clock. I mean, it was 2:59 yesterday. So that's, that's been, that's been pulled by the property owner for now.
So we're tailing it right now?
We're not doing anything. The property owner pulled it off the agenda, so...
Because we need a traffic study for that because now knowing the entrance and exit, it's like two driveways from ours. We're not going to be able to get out of a driveway just to live on that.
Yes, ma'am. I would, I would have you call the MPC office, and you could talk in depth with them because right now it's not, nothing the city's going to deal with.
Well, I have Councilman...
Could you, could you come, real quick? I know, we usually only allow public comment when we're going to vote on something, but since this is a passion project, but...
I know that it had been pulled.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not in here. Because I went, I was the only one in the neighborhood that went to this. I live directly, Kathleen McNair, 2300 Benton Road.
Yes, ma'am.
I live directly across. I was at this meeting, and they did approve it. Councilman Cochran, Vince DiMaggio Sunday, and Cliff Smith also met with me Sunday. I showed them what's going on there, and they agreed that it is not really a viable business location. And the fact that they had turned down a business, wedding business venue further down at the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're going to get sued because you shut them down, but you're letting them have this business.
Yes, so the city council right now, it's not them we're taking under consideration. They pulled it off the agenda, so...
Okay, because that's why I'm here. That was the only reason.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't look on the site yesterday to see if that had been pulled because Sunday it was, you know, go day, so...
I understand.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
So like I was saying before, Councilman Hammond interrupted me. We were going to say happy birthday to Shelby Chandler. Louis, do you have anything? Did the mayor send you with anything to say? Yeah, absolutely. And if you live in South Bossier, I know tonight for all the schools in South Bossier, you have South Bossier Spirit Night. So that's usually a big event for Parkway, Bossier High, Bel Air, Sun City, Curtis. So any council members, do y'all have anything? All right, if nothing else...
I would like to pass an ordinance where I can't interrupt you when I want to.
All right, meeting adjourned.